All the orders that come in for Tuesday, February 8, 2022. Let the record show that all aldermen are present. First on the agenda, I've asked for a presentation to be added here. And so we have Fun in the Sun for 2023. And I want to start off by thanking everyone for letting me share with you a project that I've been working on now for the last couple of months. And as I work my way through the presentation, I hope that most of you can at least see the same phenomenal opportunity that I can for our community. And hopefully you jump in. First off, I want to say I think it's absolutely awesome. All right? We all love splash pads. We've discussed the concept. It came up a couple of years ago. Bob and Chris brought forward a concept again a couple of months ago. And even Alderman Robinson brought it up again a couple of weeks ago. All of which has received great support and feedback from the community and ourselves, all right, including my own. I'm all on board. That gave me a warm and fuzzy feeling, knowing that we're all there. We see the benefits of splash pads for our community. And at some point in time, I think everyone's probably been to one either as a child, a parent, a grandparent, maybe an uncle or aunt. But the vision that I want to share with you today is focusing everyone on quality over quantity. It's based on working smarter, not harder, for our community. And it's about harnessing synergy. Okay, so I have on the big screen, if you want to follow along, or if you want to just follow along in a handout, that's totally fine. So when I talk about synergy, I'm talking about maximizing our existing facilities. War Vets Park. War Vets Park has a state-of-the-art, amazing rec center that we've put considerable investment in over the years. We just did, if I'm not mistaken, about $3 million over overhaul to the ice rink. We have locker rooms and bathrooms. We've put money into the pavilion there. We have a wonderful playground, new basketball courts, stadium access through the tunnel, oils games, Fourth of July, family picnics and parties. We now have expanded our trail network through the park. And we're getting ever closer to looping it into our downtown loop. Upon researching best-in-class municipal facilities, I came across Lilyhead Springs in West Bloomfield, Michigan. Yup, Michigan, as in the same place that has the same weather as us. I called and have had numerous conversations with their director of park and rec. And I got a lot of information and helpful information about their facility. It is the largest splash park in Michigan with more than 50 play features, four water slides, a 55-gallon dump bucket, and including shaded areas for spectators and older adults who just want to sit back and watch their grandkids run around and enjoy the fun time. Now, what did it cost? They started from scratch. They had demolition of the old facility, they built brand-new. The whole project scope was $4 million. The splash pad itself was about $1 million. All right? Now, that's a lot of money. But is it real? Let's look at the return on their investment. In year one, they had over 30,000 visitors. They generated over $150,000 worth of revenue with only operating costs of $10,000. The auxiliary benefits, though. Businesses, according to their park and rec, businesses use this as a tool for recruitment of new employees. Realtors use it as a tool to sell homes in their community. It was just voted the best splash park in Michigan. In history, it is a tourist destination for West Bloomfield. And here's something that I find rather important. Over 50% of the visitors, I'm sorry, over 50% of the users are visitors. And the reason I say that's important because that means it's not just money being recycled in a community, it's money being brought into their community from outside. It's not just from me, from Peter to Paul, right? It's money actually coming into their community. So, the War Vets concept. Okay, I've reached out to Vortex. And I'll go into Vortex, I mean, they are the founder of the splash pad. And Clark Patterson Lee, who we've used as engineering firms in the past with great success, about creating that synergy at War Vets Park. Our facility there, and I reached out just to get an update from Chris Uary. The pool itself is underutilized. Maybe on a good day, you might see 30 people there. The concrete is pretty rough-shape. All right? So, this is prime for an opportunity to eliminate the existing waiting pool, putting in some small splash features, putting in new fencing and seating all around the exterior, and the main attraction being the new splash park at the front, or the, what would it, I guess, be the south end of War Vets Park. If we want to harness a facility, right, that generates great money in the wintertime, why don't we focus on doing the same time, the same thing for the summertime as well? Years ago, you know, when I first joined the council, I never really thought that rec programs had the potential. I used to think that they were dragging budget. In fact, Mayor and I used to kind of go back and forth on this. But I think that Chris and this administration has helped to turn that around. The ice rink pays for itself and brings people into our community to spend their dollars here. So why don't we? There's nothing close, talking with the Vortex rec from Buffalo, there is nothing in Western New York like this. The closest, in fact, as someone who has two children and frequent, we go to Erie, Pennsylvania to use a facility like this. Okay, so what does it look like? It looks like this. When I was preparing this presentation for tonight, and Jack and Lila walked past me, hand to God, they said, Daddy, I want to go there, can you take us there? And I said, I sure as hell will, I can. I might not have sworn, let's say, I sure will. Okay? And I hope this is going to be in our community. These are renderings from Vortex that were used for the West Bloomfield project. All right? That I think is this, that would be a tremendous benefit as far as size and scope of what our rec department could use to really complete and create that resort tourist field for people to come from Allegheny County, McKean County, Cat County, Chautauqua County, heck, even Erie County, because nothing compares to this within an hour or an hour and a half Now, the question is, of course, what's it cost? So we know there's going to be a dollar value, it's going to be big. All right? $800,000 for equipment, including a brand-new state-of-the-art filtration system and pumping system, $300,000 for installation, $300,000 of all brand-new concrete, fencing, site work, deck work, $100,000 for amenities, leaving sun shades, new seating, all right, just like you would pay $30, all right, to go to a place like Waldemir and spend two, three, four hours hanging out there with your family. So total cost really is about $1.5 million. Now, the question is, how many of us would consider this? All right? If it didn't cost our taxpayers a dime? And I'll go ahead and I'll raise my hand and say, I know I would. Well, guess what? If we use West Bloomfield as a benchmark, all right, and at the very least, right, they generated $150,000 in their first year, even at half that, even at a more realistic of, say, 200 people, average daily between Memorial Day to Labor Day, at an average ticket price of $5 per person, not 30, $5, that generates $100,000 in revenue. Beyond that, it creates and revitalizes our existing pool that's cost a ton to run and is not utilized. And what about all the new opportunities? All right? And I'm not a marketing guy, but I know Chris has done a fabulous job running the rec department. Opportunities with concessions, that was something that was talked about previously. Renters, parties, new rec events, the baseball games, okay, new events for our stadium. All right, well, what does it come down to? $1.5 million. The federal government dropped almost $1.4 billion in our lap. If we take $500,000 of ARPA, right, which can be used for tourism, for the purposes of tourism, that's what we're trying to do, that's what we're, at the end of the day, besides serving our residents, we're trying to create a brand-new Oldham Inn that rivals that of Ellicottville in Cat County. We want people to come into our community and spend their money here, right? And we bond $1 million over 15 years, the debt service on that is $80,000. The revenue pays for itself. This project doesn't cost our taxpayers, okay, a dime for this installation. Here's just, I did reach out to Municipal Solutions. Okay, here, I have a closer, you know, if you wanted to look at the debt service schedule, all right, but it's on average, I said $80,000, some, it's $79, $78, $81, but on average, it's about $80,000 a year for debt service. So who is Vortex? Again, I want to give you confidence in the brand. They were established in 1995, they're a Canadian company, they are world-leading, they've got 8,000 projects over 50 countries. They have local representation, not in Canada, in Buffalo. They provide cradle-to-grave project design, customization. If the city ever, if we had city colors, a city logo, any of that could go on this facility. And if nothing else, think of 16,000 cars that use Whiteley State Street every single day that drives by War Vets Park and sees this, right? And how many of the kids sitting in the backseat say, Daddy, I want to go there? They help us to focus on reducing operating costs. The operating cost on a facility like this is actually like $8,000 a year. Now, there was some questions, I perceive, about longevity. They come in and they provide onsite training for the very first startup, okay, as well as the very first season closing. They also come back for the second start. They train us how to do that. That's part of the deal. They also offer extended warranty programs as long as we go through and do the entire water management system, which means pumps, filters and stuff that is technical, that is not necessarily, that's more Bob's expertise. Okay? But they installed, they have installed splash pads that are over 20 years old and still in operation today. In our plan, they provide all the vice on maintenance needs as well as training. So, what are the next steps? Right, sometimes you got to spend money to make money, right? We're all, I think, on the same page about helping to move our city in a new direction and create a demand, right? And be fiercely conservative while doing it. When I hear comments about, what are you doing to bring companies and jobs into the city? I think about the way that we've been trying to do it for the last 50 years, and that's just sitting by and hoping that businesses show up. You know what? Studies show that businesses come to where people want to live. It's not the other way around. 50 years ago, I went there, but not today. Businesses want to go wherever employees want to live. So if we help to breathe that vision, right, and provide modern city developments, this could help us get to that place. So, I'm really here to ask who's ready to get what and why at War Vets Park. And of course, answer any questions and ultimately try to gain your support to get this project moving along, to potentially open Memorial Day 2023. Thank you. Questions?
John, I want to, you know, when I, when I worked down in Maryland, just outside of DC, there's a place called Chesapeake Beach. Had one of these little water parks. And, you know, I was kind of fresh out of college and being a landscape architect, when I saw this place, I wanted to build one of them. You know, I thought, how could I ever do that? And, you know, over time, it just dawned on me, I didn't think I could or have anything to do with it. But I think nowadays, in the time that we've got with what happened with COVID and things, kids need things like this to do more than ever. I'm with you on the, I think it will generate revenue. I believe that. And, you know, I'm on board, I think it's something that this city needs.
Okay, thank you, Alderman, ask. Anyone else? All the results?
Yeah, I was basically going to say the same thing. I think it's a great idea. We would keep the existing pool in place and it would just kind of supplement that as well, right? It would make it an entire complex.
That's exactly it, Paul. Just like if you go to Waldemir, they've got a big wave pool there, and in fact, you need to activate it, right?
Yep.
This project includes a couple, a couple slides into the pool. Let's activate the pool space as well.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, I'm totally on board. I wouldn't, I mean, yeah, I would not be against this at all.
Okay, thank you. Alderman.
I think it's a great idea, and our kids used to go to Erie too, always once or twice.
Waldemir?
Yes, yeah. But I guess my question is, you know, it sounds like we're comparing Oldham with West Bloomfield, which the population is twice as much. And I think the other question I have, so does this replace all the other splash pads that we've been talking about in Franchot or Marcus and any of the others? Are we going to have a splash pad in every park? Just a question. The other thing, as far as the recovery funds, I guess my vision was to help infrastructure. I think it was yesterday in the paper, we were talking about water line boats that constantly happen around the city. And I guess my vision was those funds, they're one-shot deal, they're not going to come around again in five years or 10 years. And I just think we have an opportunity to give our infrastructure a boost and a lot. And I think I wouldn't be for using the funds, but I think it's a great idea. I don't know, I think it has to be quite as grandiose as this. But I think it's a great idea and I would definitely consider it, but I just think those ARP funds should protect the infrastructure.
Well, this, for what it's worth, Alderman, this does actually repair the wrong infrastructure of our existing pool. So that is part of the scope of the project, right? The concrete isn't rough, is it? I mean, we can go about, but I understand what you're saying. I also, I also believe in leverage. All right? So when we talk about leverage, we talk about an opportunity to spend money that will ultimately make greater money for us, for our operating budget in the future, right? By increasing people who come here and spend the money, by increasing sales tax revenue, by increasing demand to want to live in our community, so on and so forth, right? That creates a revenue stream that is permanent, that is passive, that it is, it's, so, I mean, I'm just throwing that out as an alternative, right? But I understand what you're saying.
Yes, are we going to charge a commission for this?
Yeah, absolutely.
But, you know, and back to the AARP, you know, the recovery funds. And I guess nobody wants to hear, you know, water lines and sewer lines aren't sexy and they're not grandiose or anything, but they're real. You know, the pool's not crashed anywhere, we don't have to repair it. People, I remember just a month or so ago on Hamlet Street over by my house, that street was shut down for a day or so. It's our infrastructure that's been neglected for years. So that was my vision of the recovery fund.
How much you think? Okay.
And I just think that, I guess if you prioritize, I think the parks, I think all of our parks need help. Gordon Park is the most unutilized park in the city. You know, War Vets Park, we have new equipment, and as you pointed out, we have a hockey, we have all kinds of sorts of things going on. We have different events throughout the city. And I think having something like this would even draw more people. I'm not totally against it, I'm just thinking of the final string.
Understood.
That would be my concern.
So, thank you, Alderman. Okay. Alderman Robinson. The calls. Let's go again. Alderman Robinson, call.
I would say, you know, I think that it looks great. I wish when my kids were younger that we had something like this. What I'm seeing, though, is that we're lacking a comprehensive plan for all the parks. You know, I heard a presentation last week, one this week, there's one for Oak Hill. What I don't see, and what I don't see kind of on the councils, like this overall kind of working on the larger system together so that we don't have competing splash pad kind of proposals. And I, you know, and I think, being new, I think that it would be helpful to have, you know, maybe time to work on a comprehensive plan so that we can see how this fits into it, along with existing, you know, the non-sexy things that do need to happen. But that would be my feedback, that I think that we need to have an overall comprehensive review of all the plant, the parks, and then put plans together.
Thank you, Alderman Robinson.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to reiterate pretty much what everyone said. I love the thought, love the idea. If this was around when my kids were younger, you know, I wouldn't have traveled to Erie and Saratoga and Rochester and Buffalo on the weekends, you know, spent a lot of money traveling to go to other places to do things when we could have very well did something like this here. As far as, you know, we got to spend money to make money. And the only way you're going to take care of infrastructure, I would love to take whatever we get from the state or from federal to use it for infrastructure. But when you think about the cost, when I think about Washington Street, that was a million dollars for one road, just one. We have more than one road. So we're going to need more than just $1 million to fix our roads, and to, not our roads, but our sewer lines and our water lines, our old infrastructure underground. And as far as, you know, what Alderman Robinson just mentioned, as far as unifying, you know, coming up and planning for the parks, you know, I've been on the council since July of last year, and we haven't had a youth and rec committee meeting, not one time. So I think they're all valid points, but I definitely would love to do something like this. And this is something that would be like the granddaddy of them all. You know, my proposal last week was just that, it was just a discussion, a proposal, looking at bringing a new spotlight to Marvis Park. It doesn't necessarily have to be a splash park, it could be, it could very well stay as a baseball field, as long as we create a theme and go around that. But this right here would be game-changing. This would, this would bring people from Eldred, McKean County, Potter County, Buffalo, you name it, this would be a stop along 17 for people to come and visit. So I definitely would like to see something like this here.
Okay. Anyone else?
I guess it's my turn.
No, you don't have to, if you don't want to.
Hello, everybody else. Right now, I don't see any resolutions for asking for funding, so I think it's a proposal for us to consider. I think it's a great idea in a way, because it will be a great tourism for our city of Oldham, bring people from other areas into the city. I'm just wondering, since Carrie is here, if there is any New York State Parks grants or any type of funding that might be available that I obviously don't know about, if there's any type of grant that we can apply for to help with the cost. I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Oh, we don't need to. We don't need to do that. We have funding already laid out for it. I mean, that's all sounds great, but, you know, we could go around in circles, like, well, geez, let's go find a hypothetical grant, pull one out at dinner. That might not ever happen. We have the money, we have a path to financing.
Well, if that are financing, right now, we're taking $500,000 on Barco, which is fine, but we're bonding the million dollars, which is coming out of taxpayer funds.
No.
Which is meaning that the annual, right, the annual cost is being covered from the revenue department generates.
Yeah, we're hoping to cover some of that. But then again, too.
I mean, what would make me think that it wouldn't?
Well, there's not so many people who would use it.
Well, I guess, I mean, I suppose I won't see you down there, but I mean.
Linda said Bluefield's a city probably three times the size of Oldham, so.
So now it's three times, it was two times the size of Oldham a minute ago, now it's three times the size of Oldham. I just hear a whole bunch of like.
I'm not, I'm so called against it right now, I mean, you might make me against it if we keep arguing, but, but anyways, for lower income, I mean, we're not a city, and there's a lot of families that have lower income. Is there any way that says children from lower-income families want to use it four times, five times a week, is there any discount, have you thought of maybe discount passes with the lower-income?
That's like, so, you know, listen, you bring up, you bring up good points, and that's part of the reason why, to my knowledge, we can ask the mayor, do we charge for Franchot Park?
No.
We don't charge for Franchot Park, right? Do we charge to go ice skating?
Ice skating, yes.
Do we charge for, do we charge for the big pool when it's open?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so there are places, right, in our community, and, you know, what I, I guess what I want to go back to is, everyone brings up valid points, absolutely, and I appreciate those points. But a comprehensive plan, which is on actually the agenda tonight in part, planning like anything in government takes a long time, a lot of committees and a lot of discussions. And there's an opportunity to make a huge impact in our community right here now, okay, for this to be, for the ball rolling and get it open for Memorial Day 2023, I guess is what I would say. And the, right now, what this project is about is not just providing a service to our community, but to provide a tourist destination, right? Something that we all know Ellicottville has, that we don't so desperately need. And to say that no one else in Western New York has this, and that it can pay for itself, and I understand, not everybody is a splash pad person, I get it, okay? But if, you know, there's a heck of a lot of people that have, right, there's a reason why businesses do it now. With that being said, Alderman, Anastasia, I'm not proposing we charge what businesses charge. You go to Waldemir, it's $20 or $30 a person, right? We're talking about $4 or $5 a person. So that's that. I mean, that, to me, that's that kind of, you know, is that for, is it for everybody? Well, no, you can't go five times a week, but maybe you could go one time a week, right? And as far as $500,000, I'm going to go ahead and ask Director Ray, $500,000 can replace about how far a water line in infrastructure? How far does that go? Approximately?
2,000 feet.
How much of, how much of Washington Street water line would that pay? Would that pay?
It would cost $2 million.
Okay, so like 25% of Washington Street?
So a block?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, is that a shot in the arm to our, to our infrastructure?
I guess my point there, right, is we've got, yes, we have absolutely serious needs, and if we need a comprehensive plan, we need a comprehensive plan on infrastructure replacement over the long term. And we better hope that this big infrastructure building that got placed in DC, got passed in DC, gives us help replacing that hundred-year-old infrastructure. This is an opportunity to create new revenue streams for the city and to turn the population score. That's, that's ultimately what I'm sitting here for, okay? And we need to start thinking differently. That's my two cents. Alderman.
Yeah, and John, I don't agree, disagree with most everything you said, but I do agree with Mr. Robinson. And since I'm the youth and rec person for this year, we've only had a few meetings. I've already talked to the mayor about just doing an inventory of our local parks. We've had plans in place for parks for a couple of years. Franchot, that's been in place for how many years, and we still haven't started. Fornis, that's just sitting there waiting for us to fix things. Marcus, we have a baseball field that they took the lights out and it's just sat there. I mean, there's so many things, and I just think the one thing that I hear from folks, I sat and I wrote down everything I think of, of every park we have in the city, and just talking to folks in my board. Ward 1 doesn't have a park, Ward 5 doesn't have a park. There are three parks in Ward 2, there are three parks in Ward 3, there are two places, there's the middle school at Oak Hill in Ward 4. Ward 5 doesn't have any, Ward 6 has Marcus, Ward 7 has actually four parks, it has, you know, the Polo Field, High Saw, Homer and Norton. So I think before we jump into something, and like I said, splashy, splashy. So I think before we jump into something, and like I said, splashy, splash pad, we don't talk about. Um, I, I just think we need to take that ten thousand feet bird's eye view to what, what else we're gonna do. And one of the things, um, that one of the people I talked to in my ward, you know, they were talking about different ideas, you know, of what Vermin had brought up, what you're bringing up tonight and other ideas would come up. And he had suggested maybe one of our parks should be a green space, you know, just.
Should be what?
A green space, you know, just some place with tables and nothing else, a quiet place. So I think that.
That seems like a good addition to taxpayer money.
Well, I, but you know what? It's less, it's less upbeat. And I think Simon made a perfect suggestion. Why not do an inventory? Uh, the mayor had mentioned the master plan and you don't wanna spend the time on that. But before you go forward, you have to take in, in a town, twenty pounds. And, you know, and I think actually I think Ward's Park is more centralized than say Oak Hill or some of the other parks. And we're already putting, what, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars into Oak Hill Park. So we're putting all this money into parks and there's no guarantee that, you know, people aren't gonna strong into Olian just for a park. Um, but again.
You, you don't think that would drop?
I think that would drop.
Oh, no, 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 I don't mean this, I just mean parks in general.
We're, we're kind of like, gotta give a little.
Orange is orange, though. We're not talking about, this isn't a, this isn't just a service, right? This isn't like, what we're doing in Oak Hill Park, we receive grant money. If it wasn't for the DRI, we wouldn't, you know, that fell in our lap, we wouldn't be doing it. That's providing a service, right? The dog park or the, the plays aren't, aren't revenue generators. This is, this is a part of our city operations. The proposal for this expands our operations and generates revenue. That's the difference between green space versus this.
But this isn't year-round. It's got an inside water park facility. I go on Erie that you're used to going to and I've gone to. This is.
Number one, I go on Walden.
Okay, now I'm talking about the one here. But this is a one-season park. And that is the other thing that someone brought up, that maybe we should look at things that are year-round. Like, the perfect example is the rec center. We use it for ice skating, we use it for roller skating, we use it for, um, different services in the summer for our youth. So it's, it's year-round. So those are just some of the suggestions I've gotten from my constituents and I just wanna share them.
Well, thank you.
Year-round.
Okay.
Uh, John, I, I'd like to put in, I don't, I don't disagree, people are tossing around a comprehensive plan for parks.
Sure.
I don't disagree with that, but I'd like to understand, how do we get that done? Do we need money to pull the trigger on that?
Right.
Because it doesn't sound like it's happening right now. Um, I hear bits and pieces about other parks, but I'd like to see, I think all the parks need upgrading.
Sure.
I've done some. I hear whispers of things going on with other ones. We're, we're pretty up to speed on Oak Hill. Um, for some reason, Fornice, I get the idea something's in the works, but not something I know a whole lot about, uh, in this room and at these meetings. Um, so I'm interested to see that, but I still fully on board that this is something that I don't think it can go wrong. I really don't.
Alderman Robinson?
I don't have any more to add. Um, you know, we've, Alderman and Whit, uh, mentioned that it, some of the parks that we've talked about upgrading have not happened over a long period of time. But we have right here an opportunity where the funding is there and we can actually make something happen where we're gonna make money on it. And we can make it happen like now. Versus putting it out there and just waiting and say, oh, we're gonna check into this, we're gonna check into that, we're gonna inventory this. So we're now putting this on the back burner, the same as we did with all these other parks that we put money aside for and said, oh, we're gonna do this part, oh, we're gonna do this part, because we've done at least two since I've been on the council and nothing has gotten started, right?
Guaranteed, that's what it did.
Right. And it's, so this is an opportunity where the money is there, we don't have to worry about taking money from the budget and moving it here and, and going through this company or, or this. We can get this done. So that.
I agree. I think we can shoot gun and lock at the same time. I did say that you got the time. I just say that you do both.
Right, right.
Yeah. Mayor?
Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, Carrie and I have been talking about, you know, doing the, uh, the park, uh, master plan and, uh, as Bob has done. Carrie reminded me, she discovered that in two thousand thirteen, there was an inventory done, the city paid to have, am I right, Carrie? Paid to have an inventory done, uh, on our parks. Uh, we're trying to locate that. Uh, Carrie has her notes from when, uh, uh, she looked at that, uh, that, that report. We're trying to locate that. So as soon as we can locate it, we can, we can share it with everybody. So. I don't know if it's in DPW's office or, uh, it was kind of two thousand thirteen, so.
I would be interested.
Maybe, but I think that would save us a lot.
I, I would be interested. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Uh, you know, uh, the ARPA funds are, yes, they're there. Uh, you know, I'll just share this with you. We've been talking about, we need to, we need to raise back in this building. Uh, we need a better air quality control. We need to move each back over at the community. We need better air quality control, uh, over there. Uh, so I know we put the new system in here, now we need to upgrade. So, uh, the money is there for these projects. We just, uh, you know, we just went through a webinar at NICO and, uh, they've relaxed what it, what it can be used for. Uh, so, uh, you know, we're, we're under the ten million dollar mark, so basically we could use it for a lot of different things. So we have a lot of, we have a lot of things to accomplish here. Um, so, uh, you know, five hundred thousand for this, that's a good chunk of that, but, uh, you know, with everything that's been said, um, now I like the idea. You know, I mean, I've, I've been to, I've been to a lot of Splash Pads, but the one I was to when I was in Terencekos had a lazy river. You go around and people float with an it or two. So that might be an idea too, add in with this, you know. So, I mean, I know there's only so much room, so much, but I think it's worth, uh, continuing to, you know, to look into this. Uh, I don't know about if we have to, uh, I think we have to go out to, uh, uh, I don't know if we can go with that supplier. If we have to, Bob, what's our limit on, on, do we have to, uh, get three bids or like that?
I still don't fully understand like sole stores when it comes to like equipment, you know, like the dog park equipment that we're gonna purchase, they provided us with a sole source letter because they make unique pieces of equipment. So I, I don't fully understand. It's more a question, I think, for Jack to deal with one supplier. Or the supplier, you know, like you ask them, how do you sell to municipalities? And they can explain to you if that's the one you wanna work with.
And I, I know Vortex does, um, they did a number of smaller projects in Buffalo for municipalities. Um, so we could get some more information from them on that process here.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I think, and, and actually Alderman, uh, Whit brought up some really, some really good points, right? We think of, uh, we, we think of Ward Vets really as this, as the hub of our recreation. And, and it's, it's really heavily utilized in the winter and it's not utilized in the summer. And, and if only we had a way to activate that and, and be able to, you know. I never, I never realized the, the rec center itself, the ice skating rink, it pays for itself in winter. So if we had something in the summer that would help to pay for itself too, right? That would be able to create leverage to maximize our operations, to see more events being held at, at, uh, at the, the stadium, right? Across the, across the street, whether it's concerts or activities or, or, or whatever, right? Um, to see the potential to expand concessions and grow new revenue streams. And, uh, and how about have skating, you know, what would it do to have a, a facility like this? And then have skating and activities going on inside the rec center. It's just gonna leverage, it's just gonna make everything more expansive, right? Bigger and, and, and more active. Um, and so I, I think that's, that's the point of this, you know? Ald, Alderman, I'm sorry. Mayor?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, oh, I could see, you know, the pervading Vortex is, is, that's booked pretty much every weekend.
Yep.
You know, either one or two, uh, people are booking in for that. So you've got a crowd. And most of these family picnics, I've had kids, so that would be a, an avenue there, uh, send the kids to over to the water park.
Absolutely. Alderman Gonzalez?
Yep. So, uh, water infrastructure upgrades and improvements and maintenance is very important, right? Like, it's a critical issue in the city of Olian in particular, uh, but it's a critical problem here because we've ignored it over the years. Because we haven't done something about it every single year, right? We, we fix things as they come up, but we don't do major projects like this on a, on a regular basis as much as we should. And that's part of the, you know, what we should be going towards in terms of making it a part of the budget every year. You know, you're making it our, you know, an agenda item that we address. Um, something like this, this is a one-shot deal, right? This money is a one-shot, you know, infusion of money. This is an immediate impact type project, right? We, if we do a block of prospect or, or whatever, yeah, that's definitely needed, it's definitely necessary. We can also do it through other revenue streams, right, or through other, through other funding sources. This gets something done for the quality of life for people in Olian, like immediately.
Absolutely.
And, and I don't know how we can look at this and renderings and instantly right out of the gate, it's labeled as grandiose, it needs to be trimmed back. I mean, my God, come on. Like, literally you've had this for five minutes and it's already like, well, we got cut all this. And typical, you know, government bureaucratic nonsense, we're gonna pare it down to nonsense and it's gonna be like, well, why did we, why didn't we do this the right way the first time?
Right. No, I, I, I think that's, we spent a lot of money, and I'm not saying one way or the other, right? We spent a lot of money and I don't even know the total dollar value, uh, because I was on the council, on Grand Park Stadium. We put a lot of money into that facility, right? And, and I drive by there and, and I think, man, if that only could be utilized more, right? Um, how do we find a way to utilize it and activate that, that entire area? This is it, okay? Um, you know, and, and that's based on research. And if you, if you guys would feel better, like I can provide you countless types of research. I'm only using the one that inspired me, right? But Vortex has a slew of, of resources that says they put in project after project after project and this direct program exploded, right? Thirty percent increase in revenue, forty percent increase in revenue, et cetera, so. And so I, I get the skepticism and if I was proposing like a park in my ward and like, you know what? I wanna put, uh, some new playground equipment there and it's gonna cost, you know, half a million dollars and we're not gonna generate any revenue from it, then I get the conversation. But something that pays for itself, right? We can, we can spend the next five years putting together a comprehensive plan, refining it and updating it and then figuring out, you know, that the playground equipment on Homer Street doesn't get utilized, maybe we pull that and put it somewhere else where it does get utilized more, you know, there are. Uh, you look at the, the playground equipment in Fornice Park and it's like, why don't we, you know, why don't we take the, that stuff and put it in Fornice and, and then boom? You know, you've got new playground equipment there. We can, we can strategize that. But like, like a hundred percent, like Paul said, we have an opportunity before us to make an impact, boom, by twenty twenty-three. All right? And, and that's obviously where I'm at and I don't wanna totally.
How do you, how do you five-year study to tell me that this is gonna be?
Right.
Good for Olian, right? Like, we, we get into like these, let's do a comprehensive plan. Sure, yeah, let's definitely do that. But that also sounds like a fast track to nothing happening for two years, right? And.
John has one last comment. I'm, I'm not saying I'm against it, it's a great idea, it's a great tourist tool, but and I just went back and looked and it is, it is gonna be fenced in, I see.
Yeah.
But can you just do me a favor and add whatever money it takes to put a security camera in there to protect the investment?
So that's a great point. Mayor, do we have Wi-Fi at Vortex?
Yes.
And do we have some camera system already in place?
Yes, we do.
And so could it be possible, is it part of the infrastructure that's there and the synergy that we could provide surveillance on a new facility?
That's sure we can, yeah.
Wonderful. Absolutely. I a hundred percent agree. Alderman Anastasia, which is absolutely, I think that's a stellar record.
You know, and I think, uh, you know, you kinda, the, the water parks, a piece of it, but, um, that pavilion, you know, when we rent it out, do we pack it up? Do we rent it out as much as we could? Um, food vendors, you know, bringing food trucks and maybe we have slots, we build and they buy permits, twenty-five, fifty bucks to be there a Saturday or a weekend, whatever, right? Like the, the thought doesn't have to end. I think it gives like an endless amount of ways, you know, as long as you, you try and you go for it, you can, you can make it bigger than it even looks now.
A hundred percent. And that's, and that's what, you know, hopefully, right, all of us, all right, the mayor, I mean, like I said, I can't give enough props to Chris Chiarri. I think, I think you give him a facility like this, I don't think he hits eighty thousand. I think he hits a hundred and twenty thousand. I mean, what, what he's generating with the, the, um, with the ice rink right now, I think we get comparable numbers. Um, and even, you know, you, you look at, you do season passes, right, for people that are in the community that want to have, you know, you can, whatever, right? I mean, the, the possibilities are, are really.
And I, and I even think, you know, um, somebody with experience or maybe this comes from the, the folks that build it, I think even, I think you're probably more on the ten dollar mark for, for Olian, for fees to use the park. Uh, when I mentioned that place in Chesapeake Beach, I mean, that was over ten years ago. I think it was eighteen or nineteen there to get in the place. Now granted, a little more population down there, they were about thirty miles outside of DC, but most of the people were from the little towns that were around there. Uh, I would think very similar to us and they were able to pull eighteen, nineteen a ticket. I thought that was high for the place.
Right.
We still won't.
Yep.
Um, but to, to get in and say that it's price roll in and that we treat our people right, I think, I think you're even around ten somewhere like that.
And, and, and that's just it. And to go back to kind of what Alderman Anastasia was talking about, I think, you know, part of what the rec director here said, I think our, our population appreciates it here, the residents, if you show, you get a price break for living in Olian, right? For a resident, it's five bucks, right? But maybe a visitor, it's ten bucks, whatever. I don't know. I'm not the, you know, this is obviously way down the road type of strategy. But if we know what our debt service is and we've gotta achieve that in revenue, what the baseline that I'm seeing, like, it, it's, it's absolutely achievable. It's not an unrealistic number. We don't need to generate two hundred thousand dollars a year off this facility, so. Alderman, uh, I'm sorry, I'm waiting patiently.
That's okay. Um, I was just kind of envisioning the one picture you showed. So basically, we're going to put this with a pool with, and are we going out further?
That one?
Yeah.
Yep.
So are we going?
So here, here, uh, there's a subtle line, all right? That's the existing fence line.
Okay.
So this is, it requires literally like no chopping down of trees, nothing, right? It's so, yeah, it's expanding and in complete vision of west, uh, east states here. Yes.
Okay, so it comes out not quite to east state?
No, not that far.
Okay. Well, my question, and like I said, I'm not against this.
Yeah, I bring my valid points, I'm not, sure.
I tend to be frugal. Um, but I was reading the, the recovery plan from Jamestown and they're doing a splash pad thing. And what they wanna do is also in the wintertime have outside skating. Would this be something that we could possibly do that way? Could they, like the picture, could you remove some of the equipment? I don't think we wanna leave it out in the winter anyway. Remove some of the equipment and use that as ice skating?
Boy, I don't know. That, that's kind of an engineering question, though.
That's a, that's a, that's something you could put into it. That, no, that's, you know, but would, I mean, besides it being cool, I mean, just as Play Devils advocate, we have an ice rink right there, right? So I mean.
But people like this.
True.
Ice rink.
No, I, I get it.
It was just an idea that Jamestown was gonna try. It was just curious.
I don't, that's something we can find out. I don't know. Um, I don't know, you know, I just, I would get nervous in, in talking with these guys. They're gonna show us how to blow out all the lines and make sure, right, we, we don't want, and Jason has brought it up too in, in the past, it's like, we don't want problems, right? And so like, I don't know what this is capable of. They didn't talk about that, but we can definitely ask and, and find out.
Well, you're, you're getting into mechanics of how we're gonna work everything.
Right.
First we gotta get it built.
First we gotta get it, we gotta get, we gotta get the funding, right? Right, Mayor? Okay, um, listen, you guys have worked with me long enough that, um, you, you've gotta think outside the box sometimes and you've gotta swing and, uh, and, and I, I hope. Now, I, I truly, truly believe that, that this would help, um, create the complete rec department, uh, over there and would be an absolute game changer, so. Um, okay, let everybody sleep on, on the mat. Thank you very much.
Hey, great job, Tim. That is really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so first, um, we have here PL nine down twenty-two by Mayor Alio to authorize the creation of capital fund two-one-five comprehensive development plan and impact. Let's go to Ms. Carrie for a brief.
Um, this is just, um, to actually create, uh, the capital account, we are awarded ninety thousand dollars in funding between Empire State Development and the Department of State. Um, as you're aware, it is applied to Catarangic County for the five thousand dollar municipal match program. The legislature will be reviewing that and making. The legislator will be reviewing that and making a decision in February. Um, I'm still waiting for the contracts to come in, um, for the mayor to sign, uh, the agreement between the city and the Department of State and Empire State Development. We provided all the information. It's just, um, in transit of some sort, um, between the state agencies to the city and whatever their internal process is. So I'm, um, just being proactive, so in interim, um, I will be able to act once those contracts are signed. I'd like to then release the RFP that I prepared, uh, on the council behalf last June and July. And I'd also, um, request, um, to send that to council members again. I sent it last summer asking for input and didn't receive anything. So, um, I revised it, um, prior to the application, I fine-tuned it from last June to July, and I'd like to again send that to council members because this is ultimately a council action, and it's our vision for the city for the next twenty years, and I appreciate some input. Um, in case there's something I missed or a greater vision that you want me to find in a consultant. So that's, um, my.
You know, when you bring up a, a big, so I've got a good question, run out with a question. How do you know about finding the consultant? I mean, I know you, you said we've got tremendous luck with the previous one. That was a long time ago, obviously, do they still, are they still, like, how do you go about finding a consultant for this?
Yep, so it'll be that document I prepared. Um, it's a request for proposal. I have different criteria in it, um, relating to every aspect of the city, whether it be parks, infrastructure, but just to kind of touch on what you guys were going over earlier, it's, it's not going to be a park inventory, there's not going to be estimates. It's, um, planning and visioning, so if that's something you're seeking, that's a totally different project. So I don't want to lead you down a path that you think you're going to get that end result out of a comprehensive development plan. This is more of a high-level overview. Um, if you think about what we did on our two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty-five plan, it, we're not at two thousand and twenty-five, however, we completed the majority of the visioning in that plan and went beyond that scope. Um, a roundabout is not in the plan that we're in right now. So I guess what I'm seeking is I can send that document out, everyone can see what I've done, because I'm saying in this document, I want that consultant so that the city is a role model city, a small city that we, we've been bull, we've been strong, let's move it even further. Let's find that visionary consultant that can push us even further than we could imagine. So I'm hoping I, um, put that into this document. I would just like, um, other minds and input, and maybe there's something I'm lacking. I'd just like, um, someone else to do it before I even send it off.
You, you hit a key word that sells it for me, and that's visionary, right? That's what we're, I think, most of us are trying to achieve, so, um, all right, that's, that's awesome. Any other questions for the council on this? Okay, thank you, Ms. Corrigan.
Sure.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. Could I get a second, please?
Yes.
Second by Alderman Witt, all in favor? I opposed. Okay, motion carried and is referred to tonight's regular meeting. So next we have PL ten dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio to award the general contract of North Union Streets, uh, Streetscape project to Benson Construction at the amount of seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, I would assume then the Director Ray?
Well, tonight we're asking you to pass two resolutions. One is to award the general contract of North Union Streets, Streetscape Project to Benson Construction. They were a little bitter for the project. Um, you know, you see the amount of, of their construction. That is added on to the electrical contract that we've already awarded to Kelfer Construction, um, and also the wave-minding contract that we've awarded to Color Ads. We're in the middle of fabricating those signs, and they're going to go up in April. And then the main, um, part of the contract will start, so because of the rising costs of construction costs, um, we originally had nine hundred and, nine hundred thousand construction funds. We have a total project funding, I, I ran through this last week, um, at, at the capital project update, but I'll just run you through the finances one more time, just so you can make an informed decision. But, uh, our, our project funding is up to, um, one point zero four million, and that leaves us in a deficit of about a hundred and one thousand dollars. So we did a restriking project last year, capital fund two oh one. There's still seventy-seven thousand remaining in that fund out of the ninety thousand, because we had spent some out of the EPW budget, Kerry had applied for a grant that was fifteen thousand, and then ended up going back into that fund. So we spent quite a bit less than we thought we were going to. We didn't do some of the curb ramp work that we thought we had, but we completed the project. So what I'm proposing is we take that seventy-seven thousand eight twenty-five, which is on to resolution tonight, we transfer it into the North Union Street Capital Fund, bringing our total project funding up to one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand. That leaves us at about a twenty-four thousand dollar deficit for the project, which I think is great, a million-dollar project. To be in that situation, given the climate of, of bidding and goods and things like that, we worked really hard to get all three of those contracts on point and as close to budget as we could, and worked with Department of State. Now, this is a DRI-funded project, so we're asking to pass those two resolutions to award and to transfer. And then when we bar, when we revan, we'll revan with the additional twenty-four thousand in city commitment.
And just, can you give a general rundown again? Because of so many DRI scopes going on, what is this essentially covering?
Uh, the sidewalk replacement, development of public spaces at the city building, um, and in front of the Bistro and the Chamber Building, those will have, um, gas fireplaces that you can go, and you can push a button, and they'll run for fifteen minutes. There'll be outdoor seating there, they'll be, those will be leveled, and they'll have, um, you know, blocked up areas protecting from cars. Lighting improvements, so at intersections, there'll be, uh, solar lighting to light up pedestrians as they cross, which has got a criticism in the street, so things like that, wave-finding signage, um, overhead lighting.
Are we, you guys were talking about doing the hanging lighting, is that, is that going to happen?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Alderman, definitely.
This is going to do all the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, every other light, there'll be decorative E-stra lighting across, down the entire street. And it actually will be programmable to change colors or blink or things like that. We worked with the local, um, consultant, Andy Mallon, so he, he's really talented. He's worked on big projects for, for big Fortune-type company, we got with him, and, um.
Sounds pretty grandiose. Uh, I question, it's going to replace all of the sidewalks? Like, we're going to basically, what we didn't do when we cut corners when we did North Union Street, this is going to rectify that shortcoming?
All the deficient sidewalks, not all the sidewalks.
Okay.
So there won't be tripping hazards, you're still going to have, you know, changes in color from concrete, but that's really unavoidable. I mean, two years after you do brand new concrete, something happens and the color, and you already get that color changed.
I wouldn't worry. Whenever I've gone up North Union, I've never thought about the different color in the concrete. It's looked good even though we've got so far.
Well said. Yeah, I also, I also tend this as the, you've already approved, uh, the digital sign over at, at Warbets. This will be the, uh, the actual apparatus that the digital, the digital board will set up.
Awesome.
You might have already answered my question about, I was talking to Linda this afternoon. Um, and, and ironically, I just had a constituent call me with concerns about the lighting and the illumination of North Union Street. And they're saying how dark it is, and they can't see people like crossing the streets. So I think you already answered that, you said that there's going to be a light there when somebody's crossing, it's going to get brighter.
Yeah, so we targeted, um, the pedestrian refugee islands, which are very dark. So we want to light up the Persian and refugee island, there's plants that grow up high. So those will be solar lights, they'll be at every pedestrian crossing. We're still working on some lighting, you know, at the crossings and intersections. But we think that'll be a big help.
Awesome. Thanks for giving that rundown on, on the scope of the project. Uh, any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Alderman, uh, Alderman McCall, uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gonzalez, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried on PL ten dash twenty-two, and, uh, this is transferring the remaining, uh, money to the restriking project towards this. Uh, so PL eleven dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio to transfer seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars from capital fund two zero six, restriking the city streets to capital fund two zero one, North Union Street, Streetscape. I'll entertain a motion. Motion is made by Alderman Anastasia, could I get a second, please?
Oh, sir.
Second by Alderman, uh, Alderman Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried and is referred to tonight's regular meeting as well. Okay, I will, uh, this time I will make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second, please?
So second.
Second by Alderman Gonzalez, all in favor? I opposed. Okay, the adjournment committed to the whole. And. We have two sessions, I'm sorry. Uh, we, uh, we have to go through formalities. That was like our penny, and now we'll go into regular session, okay? All right. All right, so at this time, I'll call and order the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. For the clerk, please call the attendance roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Here.
Alderman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
Council President?
Here. Please rise and be moved to a position.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name, we pray.
I'm glad to witness the United States of America and to serve all the great citizens of America. One nation under God, and in the love of the Constitution of America.
Please correct and approve of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
Regular meeting of the Olean Common Council was held on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two at six fifty-five PM. Present, Alderman Crawford, Witt, Panis, Gonzalez, McCall, Robinson, and Anastasia.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Anastasia, all in favor? I opposed, motion carried. Committee reports, have you finished council business?
None.
And how about communications from the mayor?
Uh, we have proclamation that, uh, Frank will read, or special proclamation for Black History Month. Frank, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Special proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. Whereas in nineteen fifteen, Dr. Carver Goodwin Woodson established the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. And the following year, he initiated the publication of the Journal of Negro History, one of the oldest learned journals in the United States. Whereas Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week on February twelfth of nineteen twenty-six, and for many years, the second week of February was chosen as, so as to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. Whereas in nineteen seventy-six, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and became Black History Month, and is now celebrated throughout the nation. Whereas the city of Olean is blessed to have the African-American Center for Cultural Development as a mainstay in our community for many years. The center has sponsored events and worked with our residents to promote and integrate the rich and diverse history and culture of our region through the celebration of the talents, lives, and history of, of African-Americans in our region. Whereas the city of Olean is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout our state and nation, and will continue to work to be an inclusive community where all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for the contributions to our community. Therefore, I, William J. Alio, as mayor of Olean, New York, and on behalf of the common council, do hereby proclaim February two thousand and twenty-two as Black History Month in the city of Olean, New York. For the city, signed, William Alio.
And we have Dela Moore, who, uh, I will be presenting this proclamation to.
On behalf of the city, myself, and the alderman, I represent you with this proclamation and commend you for the work you're doing to bring forth, uh, the African-American Cultural Center and to, uh, help with the culture in our, our great city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I've been crying a lot lately, and this is one of them.
Thank you, Dela, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dela.
Can I ask, I, I know that Dela and the African-American Society, they have some activities, but what, in addition to our proclamation, what activities does the city have planned in terms of Black History Month?
I don't think we have anything else planned at this time, but the, your suggestion would be happy to look.
Well, it might be something to think about for, for next year. I don't have anything on the next issue, but that would be, maybe we could do something in collaboration with Dela and the African-Americans.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I know, Dela has, uh, she was at Tops Market, the event there, and you have, uh, where else are you going to be? The library?
The library. We're there now, uh, for the presentation at the library all month, on those two places. Uh, because of the COVID, we sort of, like, want to do it smaller than, uh, next year, watch out.
We'd be very happy to coordinate and participate with you on, on any event.
Can Alderman McCall, if there's any ideas or concepts that you, you would suggest or come up with, um, you know, in preparation for, for next year, please let, let me, let me know how the council can help, and I'm sure, you know, Bill's always, um, willing to, to partner up as well, so anything we can collaborate on, I think that would be awesome. Okay?
The other item I have is I have, uh, the resignation of Director Ray. Bob, you received this too, but, uh, Mayor Alio, as we got, and attended my resignation from a position of Director of Public Works of the city of Olean, resigned from all associated committees and boards back to March first, two thousand and twenty-two. It has been an honor and privilege to have, had the opportunity to serve the people of the city of Olean in this capacity over, over four years. Uh, if I can be of any assistance during this transition, please let me know. Signed, Robert W. Ray, P.E. So I thank Bob for his four years of service to the city, and, uh, wish him good luck in his next endeavor.
Thank you, Bob.
Yes, thank you. I would like to say, though, uh, you know, and, and Bill, maybe, um, you'd be able to, you know, I know this came in short notice here, maybe by, in two weeks' time, you'd be able to kind of give us a plan as far as, we have a number, obviously, of critical projects underway, um, what your plan is for that position in the long run and in the short run, and so on and so forth. So we could get an update from you, perhaps, in two weeks?
I could give you an update right now.
Oh, okay.
We will be advertising for the new Public Works Director. Bob has, uh, graciously agreed to stay on, uh, eight to ten hours a week to, uh, wrap up a lot of these projects and stuff in the interim until we get somebody on board.
Okay. All right, very well, thank you for that update. Anything else, Mayor?
No, that's all I have, thank you.
All right. Miscellaneous communications?
None.
State official reports?
None.
How about proposed legislation and.
Repose. PL number nine dash twenty-two, refer to the, refer to committee of the whole Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two by Council President. PL ten dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio, refer to committee of the whole Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two by Council President. PL eleven dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio, refer to committee of the whole Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two by Council President. council president.
All right, so before we put it off the public comment, I would like to give an opportunity to any of the council members at this time to make a statement.
I think I'd say this, John, I was just getting a liking, Bob, and I don't know why you're leaving. So I think we can do it in the next two weeks to change your mind.
I'd like you to go into executive session.
I'd like to add that, Bob, you've done wonderful work with, can't say enough of your much. I appreciate more six and I'm pretty sure all the other words. Appreciate everything you've done in, in the short time that I've been here. I've learned a lot and, and we've worked well together and definitely appreciate it and wish you luck in future endeavors.
Say there, Bob, because I know I bug you on the weekends before with some constituent complaints and you graciously took the calls and took care of the drought and so, thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate everybody and the opportunity that you gave and stuff.
Yeah, my, my input is that I worry about finding someone with the, with the heart that you had for the job, Bob. Running the PTW department and being an engineer, I can imagine is a good job from many angles. You know, but, but I saw the work you did here and I appreciate it. And I hope we can find someone to continue that because it's a key, it's a key place for us to keep doing all the good things we've done.
Yeah, I would, I would, go ahead, also.
No, I just wanted to wish Bob luck in this meeting.
You know, we've gotten spoiled over the past four years having Bob and Perry work side by side on the behalf of the city. And, you know, and all the, all the department heads, but, but for the past four years, you know, as far as helping us to find money and then making sure that the projects come to fruition, right? We've got a really good team and, you know, and people will come and go and, and we just need to keep moving forward. So I do thank Bob for his service. We've, we've got a great organization here and so I'm hopeful that we find someone equally committed to this, this organization, so. Very good. So at this time, I would ask that clerk to please read the public comments page.
Public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
Okay, at this time, I will invite any members of the public to approach the podium, state your name and address. You have time.
My name is Charlotte Hardy and I live in Ole Miss on 12th Street. I come not to speak about comprehensive plan, but I did hear that mentioned quite often. So just for a moment, I just wanted to say that back in 2004, 2005, Linda and I were on that committee. And there's a lot that has changed during this last years. So I would, I would suggest that you really move forward in that as soon as you can. We, on the zoning board, we have four hours of training every year to keep ourselves up to date on what's happening. This year, some of them were, one of them on the trail system, another one was on solar panels, and another one was on comprehensive plan. They were excellent, excellent. And of course, there was a fourth one. But things have changed dramatically and I think that we shouldn't wait until 2025 to move forward with that because we want to have our city up to date. Now, the speaker that we had on the trails program was just beyond excellent. The one on the comprehensive plan had so many great slides and ways of being able to project things so that we would be able to have a really excellent comprehensive plan. And also, having been on the zoning board for so many years, I can tell you it would be a big help to us if we had something up to date. So we were trying to work on things that we really shouldn't be working on, that would just be in the program. Okay, what I came to talk to you about was actually, do we have an animal control officer yet?
Not yet, Ms. Hardy. I'm hoping that we're working on that.
Well, I know that Mayor Alio has spoken about that and I'm concerned about that as well because I had friends who worked out with the SPCA and they would have to go out in their own vehicles and actually pick up animals. It's really quite dangerous. Now, at one point, they said that they got the animals into their car, their personal cars. There wasn't any kind of a car for them that was protected and it wouldn't let them back in. And so with an animal control officer, that would help the SPCA, I'm sure. Now, another thing I'm concerned about is I was told that legally, without an animal control officer, that we should not be collecting license fees. Is that true? Okay, the other thing is, is that over the years, since we haven't had an animal control officer, our attorneys have had to represent us in court. And I'm not sure if they should be doing that. I think that's putting them in a really bad position if they're not legally supposed to be doing that. And I also know that the $300 that they collect from the judge goes to the SPCA, which is good. But I really would suggest that you move forward with Mayor Alio and get this taken care of because he's, he's going to work on behalf of the city and behalf of the SPCA by doing that. Hey, thank you. I have a five-year-old granddaughter that's visiting me, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Congratulations.
Okay, anyone else, please? Anyone else?
My name is Charles Cornish from the resident North Sixth Street in Ole Miss. I live around the corner from Oak Hill Park and I would like to know what the situation is with the, go ahead with that now, as far as the dog park. Is it a, go ahead?
The project is being funded as, as, as built, yes, as designed.
There's no change in your mind on that? Why are you putting it in the middle of a residential area is my biggest question.
So this is typically not a back and forth, Mr. Cornish. If you would like to schedule some time to talk, this is public comment, so you can make a statement if you wish. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. My number is in the book. Email me, I'm happy to answer anything. If you'd like to make your statement, please do so.
I don't believe it should go in a residential area. I, does any of you here live within two blocks of Oak Hill Park? You're the only one out of all these people?
We all, we all represent.
You live within two blocks of Oak Hill Park?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So you aren't going to be able to do the dogs park probably either, that are in this park?
Dogs are allowed there now, you know. They can bark there now.
Pardon?
Dogs are allowed in the park now. They can bark there now.
Yeah, but they aren't, they're playing, they're walk through there. They bark there now, but I mean, you're, you're attracting dogs by putting a park in.
As opposed to people injecting heroin?
This is, this is not a back and forth, so please feel free to make your statement.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm just requesting that you don't put it in a residential area. This park here would be a great place for the dog park. Could have everything right into one area at Ward Bets. Have you thought about that? That might be good. One thing, you have no parking at Oak Hill Park at all. You have none. Everything's on the street and those streets are packed at night. Sixth Street is, Washington is, there's very little parking on Fourth Street and they have a daycare center there, which is really busy all morning and all afternoon at the church. I'm sure you know where that is. That's, that's my opinion, that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cornish. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Third time, anyone else? All right, at this time, I'll call all the council. How do you find anything, Phil's?
None.
And resolutions?
Resolution 922, PL 922, sponsored by President Crawford, Alderman Witt, to authorize the creation of Capital Fund Number 215 Comprehensive Development Plan.
All right, we discussed this in committee of the whole. Any final questions? Same none, we'll quick please call the roll.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you.
Resolution number 10-22, PL 1022, sponsored by Alderwoman McCall, seconded by Alderman Gonzalez, to award the general contract for the North Union Streets, Streetscape Project to Benson Construction at the amount of $798,507.50.
Okay, we discussed this one, too, in committee of the whole. Any comments or questions? Same none, we'll quick please call the roll.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution number 11-22, PL 1122, by, sponsored by Alderman Anastasia, seconded by Alderman Robinson. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from Capital Fund Number 206, restriking of city street, streets to Capital Fund Number 201, North Union Streets, Streetscape.
Okay, that's always discussed in committee of the whole. Any last questions, comments? Same none, we'll quick please call the roll.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, very good, thank you, everyone. Thanks for your time tonight. You know, before we adjourn, I just wanted to point out just one last minute here to, to that photograph up on the slide, you know. Bill, I think, I think that kind of, how many grandchildren do you have? That, that might work, that might be close to how many grandkids you have, isn't it? That could be like the Alio family up there.
I'm truly blessed, I have 12.
I mean, I think that's, I could definitely stand Alio way to get there, so.
Gonna have to make it bigger.
Gonna have to make it bigger. Okay, I'll make the motion to adjourn. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gonzalez, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.